Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for February 14, 2017. Role call. And real quick, I understand that Supervisor Foy is going to be a little late and Supervisor Bennett's out of town today. Role call.
Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here. Next, join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item four, minutes of the meeting in special district governed by a Board of Supervisor that was held on Feb. 7.
Move it through then.
Okay, got a motion. Please vote. And that's approved. Okay, then our next item is the agenda review.
Thank you Chair Zaragoza. Item 20, CEO's office, second public hearing regarding adoption of an amendment to the 2016-19 MOA with SEIU. A revised board letter, exhibit three, and a comment letter from the Civil Service Commission have been submitted. In addition, agenda page six was updated to reflect the change in the board letter. Item 21, CEO's office, second public hearing regarding adoption of the 2017-19 MOA with VEA. A comment letter from the Civil Service Commission has been submitted and the agenda page six was updated. Item 22, HCA Healthcare Agency, receive and file a presentation regarding We Give campaign. A revised board letter has been submitted. Item 24, Public Works, Water Works Districts, public hearing regarding proposed water rates and charges, Waterworks District number 38. One additional protest letter and a PowerPoint have been submitted. And finally, item 25, Public Works, Waterworks District, public hearing regarding water rates and charges, Waterworks District number 17. A board letter, exhibit one, and a PowerPoint have been submitted. And that's it.
Thank you, Michael. And Supervisors, any other revisions or additions? None? Okay. We had a movement of inspiration individual. I don't see him in...
We need to vote for it.
I'm sorry, second. I'll second that. Thank you. Okay, and that's approved. And I don't see our individual here today, so we... Lourdes? Where's Lourdes? Is, um...
She's looking for him.
She's looking for him? Okay, well... We'll continue.
We can come back to it, right?
We can continue. Okay, okay, if he shows up. He's probably out there trying to find a parking. Okay, next item is the consent. It's, um, consent items 11 to 19. Okay. So we go ahead and, okay, then our next item is public comments. And we, I don't have any speaker cards for public comments, but I understand we have our sheriff that would like to give us a little update on the current immigration problem. Sheriff...
We're going to do that during board comments.
Board comments? Okay, not under public... I don't have any public comments. Okay, so board comments, and we'll start off with...
Supervisor Parks.
Okay, so we'll bring up the sheriff then.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Jeff Dean, Ventura County Sheriff. I apologize, I'm on day 30 of this cold. And I have to put a plug in for our heroes down in employee health. I probably would've ended up in the hospital a couple times, but Amy, the nurse practitioner down there has bailed me out on two occasions. So hurrah for employee health down there. Mr. Powers, and I spoke on the phone, and he thought it might be a good idea to come just briefly address the immigration issue. It's since our new president came in and several executive orders have been passed, there's a high level of anxiety throughout many of our communities. And I think all of you received the letter that I wrote. In addition to that, all the chiefs of police and the district attorney got together and we released a public document kind of outlining what our position is. And although it's, it might be redundant, it might be helpful if I repeat it here. In fact, we haven't been involved in field level immigration enforcement, and I can't remember how long, probably in excess of 20 years. And none of the law enforcement agencies of Ventura County have any intention of doing that. And I can tell you, that's probably a pretty consistent application throughout the state of California. I haven't recently met with most of the sheriffs in the state. It's their position. That's just not our job, and that's not what we're going to be doing. But as I said in my statement, if in fact someone is arrested and it rises to the level of a significant enough crime, they're booked in their jail, we do report people to ICE that are foreign-born. And if with that, we leave it alone, ICE comes in and conducts their own investigation. By way of statistics, for the federal calendar year last year, we booked in excess of 27,000 people in our jail. And ICE came in and identified about 350 and removed 258 of those people. The charges that they removed them for were everything from murder, rape, robbery, possession of weapons, all the way down to DUI. So maybe, I think the actual percentage was about 0.8% of the people they actually removed. They weren't necessarily moved from the country, but they were taken into ICE custody and put into the administrative deportation process. So we don't anticipate any changes. We're getting multiple calls every single day about rumors about ICE raids and ICE roadblocks. And we've actually seen none of that occur. And we were just speaking last night with my executive staff about how we're probably going to start consistently answering that. We're just going to, if we have no information, we'll have no information, and we're going to forward those people to ICE. We really don't want to get in a position of evaluating what they did or trying to get access to information. As you may or may not know, ICE put out a press release after their roundup they did a couple days ago where they took into custody a multiple number of felons and people that were in the country illegally. They listed those charges. That's federal jurisdiction, and we're going to leave that for them to handle that responsibility.
And thank you Sheriff, you know, for keeping us up to speed on that and up to date. In fact, the, I was reading about the Mexican consulate, you know, sharing with the community not to worry, not to panic, and stop listening to rumors. And I think that's extremely important to it because the normal ICE work that they're doing is just a normal routine. It's not an aggravated amount or increased amount of work that they're doing. So he's sharing the same information that you are and noticing the people not to panic and not to listen to rumors.
That's a great idea.
Which I think is extremely important. And he, it's in the paper today, you know, so I think it's important that we do that. So...
Thank you again for coming. I do appreciate the short notice. However, it's very important that our constituents knows what's going on. Everyone that's sitting in this room has a lot of friends, so they're getting educated, and we'll spread the word out. It's very important, especially when you see one of our cities in the newspaper. People do get concerned. And I really do appreciate that everyone's being on top of mind and quick on this. I mean, on the weekends, late nights, everyone's making sure that our constituents are safe and that we know what's going on in our community. And I really appreciate that. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem.
And thank you, you know, you did a good job the other day at Oxford College, you know, with balancing out, you know, the concerns of people. And people were really happy that you were there, and they felt safer when they walked out. And so thank God the sheriff is here.
It was a good forum. It was a very reasonable forum.
I also want to thank you for helping to give the information out. I thought the Star did a really good job in explaining the position. We're not into working to get the people off the street and to ICE. That is not our position. When we're talking about releasing some of the inmates to ICE, are you confident that, you know, if we're talking about rapists or murderers, that these people, once released, are going to serve their time?
Yeah, ICE doesn't come pick anybody up until they've completed all their local charges and they've served their time.
Well, that's important. I think that's really important.
I agree.
They're going to serve their time. And I'd hate for them to be released and then, you know, not having to finish their time, maybe in Mexico or wherever. So good to know.
And Sheriff, and I think that's which means any individuals that commit felonies and horrible crimes should be, you know, put in jail immediately and deported. I mean, we believe that.
Yeah, I don't think any of us want those kind of people roaming the streets to find more victims.
Absolutely. And your staff is doing a good job, dear Sheriff. They're doing a good job. And thank you so much for reporting to us.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, then our board comments will go to Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I would ask that our board close in honor of former Mayor Francis Prince of Thousand Oaks. She was the very first female mayor in Thousand Oaks. We haven't had that many. But she served twice as mayor, both in '78 and then again in 1983. And like many of the council members in Thousand Oaks, she also served on the Planning Commission and really was a pioneer, kind of founding mother of our city. She worked very closely with the Caneo Recreation and Park District and the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency and just kind of embodied a lot of what everyone in Thousand Oaks appreciates, which is the open space protection measures. She worked closely in helping to actually protect some areas out in Wildwood. She was a Wildwood Park Homeowners Association President, and I think that's how she got involved in politics, helped to end a proposed 2,000 home development out there, which is now the Wildwood Playfield. I know that she and her whole family have been involved really in open space protection measures in support of our community. She worked to help assist the beginnings of the Civic Arts Plaza and also was important in creating an adult care center, Senior Concerns, which is very much used in our community. So I just ask that we do close in honor of her. She was also recognized by our former Women's Commission, so I, and I know that she will be very much missed by our community. It was nice that the Park District was able to honor her before she died, and I know that she will be very much missed. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Long?
Hello, thank you. I had the pleasure and honor to go to the New Supervisor Institute. It's not often we get to do this. I went to one, meet all the new supervisors. There's over 55 new supervisors, so the rooms were full. And great information, but I do want to thank the department heads that I've been meeting with and our employees because I went to this institute very well with a lot of knowledge. And a lot of supervisors hadn't had those discussions with the departments. And so I was, I felt very good that we have a great department.
That's what CSAC.
Yeah, well, that was with CSAC. And so I just wanted to say thank you. I have to state it also because it's public information using public money. And also, you know who I got to support was Kim Pearl Hart. Our Director of Planning was there presenting in regards to what our county does for our planning department. And it was well received. She did a fabulous job, so I was really happy to be there to support her on it. The other thing we've gone to just in the last week is the Ventura County Special Districts Association. I spoke to them in regards to all the different wonderful things we're doing in the county and where we're moving. And yesterday, we had for the 211 Ventura County, they just did their kickoff for text messaging. And that is huge. I just wanted to take a minute to make sure that you can now click or call or text 211 Ventura. They have a website, 211ventura.org, or you can text TXT211 on their website. They have such great information. We are talking, they have, gave us a pamphlet and it's on the website of all the information that they're collecting. And it's amazing that the majority of people, no matter where you are in living, you have a cellphone. And therefore, if you're homeless, if you're, wherever you are, most people have a cellphone, and you can actually text and get help. So for example, if you were wondering where the homeless shelter was, or if you needed a pantry, or you're in a domestic violence situation, you can text and no one can hear you. So it's something that you can personally do quickly. And their calls, the majority of their calls are mental health crisis and domestic violence crisis. And out of the two, roughly 20,000 calls, it was, I don't want to mess this up, 6,500 calls were new just in last year. So this information has been spread word by mouth. It's not been, you know, tons of marketing money. So I'm only asking if people would spread the word on the 211. It gives you every, it's just a great connection for our community to get to where you need to go. They help you get to the organizations that will help you. Instead of being a silo and I only do one thing, they will try and guide you to the right places.
We supported 211 for many, many years. It's very, very good.
That's right. And so I just wanted to hit that with them doing the launch on the text.
And Supervisor Long also, my staff attended that too. And it is surprising as we see the millennials coming in onboard too, needing services. This is their go-to, is texting instead of calling. And I think they're starting to see a real shift. People aren't calling anymore. They're texting.
They're texting, right.
Right.
It's really a great resource that they have.
And they said the oldest millennium is 37.
Yeah, right.
That seemed crazy to me. So I just wanted to make sure we hit that. Also, our, Martine Hernandez on our staff, he'll be holding a District Three office hours now in Fillmore and Santa Paula. I'll be there too on certain days, and they'll be alternating Fridays from 9:00 to noon. This will begin in Fillmore on February 17th at the City Council Chambers, followed by Santa Paula on the 24th for City Hall. So if anyone would like to come and stop by as a constituent, you'll be, will be there. We are hopeful in opening up an office in Camarillo where we plan on moving our office. So we're also there and then trying to find ours in Santa Paul, in Port Huaynimi as well. We have a very long, diverse district and want to make sure that our constituents can get to our office. Also, you know, the rain is fabulous. Being up in Sacramento, the rivers are full. And we, I don't know about you, but we all have a lot of water questions. And I'm wondering if the board gets a presentation on the storms and the rains in the end of the year, end of the season. How well did we do? What worked?
Certainly, certainly have that at the end of the season, absolutely.
Wonderful. Because I always get the questions of how much water did we collect today?
And also, you as a member of AWA, you probably get a lot of that information too from...
Well, that'll be great. And I'm sure that I won't be the only one wanting to see that. And then it's really cute here. We have Orvine Carpenter in Georgia, Carpenter 92 and 90. They've been married 71 years. This was in the Ventura County Star today. I just want to say Happy Valentine's Day. It's, you know, special moments are all throughout our county, and it's a wonderful time. So, thank you.
And Orvine was in the Port Huaynimi City Council for...
Oh, yes. There you go. Oh, and Jordan in the memory.
Yeah. Supervisor Foy?
Thank you. Excuse me for being late. I'd like to adjourn in memory of people on this list. Just call out one gentleman, Hal Gere. He was a decorated war veteran in World War II, and he died on January 26th at 100 years old. But he's an interesting guy. He enlisted in the Army, he's, you know, two weeks after Pearl Harbor. And he serves at Cameron, shooting images and newsreels that we probably all saw over China, you know, the Flying Tigers, and remained active duty, you know, until 45, but 24 years. Awesome reserves, distinguished flying cross. Then he used that ability as a cameraman to work in Hollywood Warner Brothers and Vice President and executive producer. So just wanted to call him out on that. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd just like to report that last week I attended the Oxford Chamber Commerce. They introduced the two Assistant City Managers for the City of Oxford. And it was a pretty good networking, and they were sharing what they were going to do to try to help the City of Oxford get ahead. And that was at the Residence Inn in Oxford. I also attended the LULAC Annual Leadership Breakfast at La Fonda del Rey in Oxford, and that was well attended, you know, by many individuals. We had three individuals that were honored, you know, Mayor Pro Tem, Carmen Ramirez, you know, and also we had a Cesar from, Morales from the Oxford School District, and another individual from Santa Paula that was there. And it was well attended. Also, I attended the Clinicas Camino de Rial. They had a dental health fair in El Rio, and that hundreds of kids that went on to have their teeth checked out and x-rayed, and really, really great for the children. And also attended the Pinkert Youth Institute, the African-American Youth Leadership Awards. And Supervisor Long was there with me, and I had to leave early, and thank you for covering for me too.
My pleasure.
Yeah, it was, it was great. You know, what do we have, a couple of hundred people there, I think, Supervisor?
Yes, it was wonderful. And just to support our youth and how the trajectory, if you just start them with a little bit of positive influence, what it can do for their life. It was fabulous.
Yeah, and they, they're doing a good job. Bedford Pinkert and Irene Pinkert are doing an excellent job. And one of our little young ladies that worked with us as an intern was there. And it was just a great, a great program. And that's all I have. And then I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list. And now we have our CEO, and then we'll go back to consent.
Thank you Chair Zaragoza, board members. Just to let you know, we are continuing to work with CSAC on the IHSS issues. There's some meetings with the governor going on this week. Also attended on your behalf, Project Understanding, Shining Star Awards, and gave an award to CAPS Media for the great collaborator. And they really do a wonderful job, if you've ever seen the work that they do. Also attended the Food Share wrap-up party for the Can Tree event, and Ventura County came in second with 40 trees. And I think that really symbolizes the generous spirit of our county family here. Just to let you know, the first place winner, I think, was Farmers. They had 80 trees. So we didn't miss it by much.
Farmers Insurance.
Farmers, yeah. Eighty trees. But 40 trees by the county was outstanding. Also want to let you know that we have the annual reports out, and thank you Bill Nash for spearheading that project. It's a lot of information to try to summarize, but I think he's done it in a really nice, concise way that's easy to read and hopefully gets, continue to get the word out about what the county does. All the good things that the county does. And speaking of which, at the grand opening for the Crisis Stabilization, Children's Crisis Stabilization Unit, I think a lot of us there were struck by the quality of the work that was done by GSA. And I just wanted to take a minute, I know they were busy on other projects and weren't able to attend, but just if we could put the PowerPoint up real quick, just to show these pictures of what it looked like. Because this makes a big statement to the community, to the children, to the family that we're serving about, you know, treating them with respect and dignity. And you can see the before is on the left and the after is on the right, of course. And then this is very, this is the before, the residence rooms, and you can see after. So I think very, very compelling about the quality of the work and how much care they put into, into doing this work. And really made it a warm, these things can feel institutional, these facilities sometimes. And this does not feel institutional. It feels like a, it feels like a residence.
It feels like home.
And so, as you can see, just as soon as you walk in, what's that first impression that you have when you walk in? So there you go. So I do want to thank Glenn Hemmy for his great work, as well as Terrence Greenlaw. So you guys just did an outstanding job, and thank you very much for the work that you did, Glenn. Thank you. And then lastly, just to let you know, we will be starting our target budget meetings in March. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for these. These are really helpful when we address the community and we can hand them out. And people, so many people don't know what the county does, so it's nice to have it encapsulated and with the finances and all too. Thank you.
So this is going to be available to the, to the public?
Yep.
Which is really, really great. And I think Supervisor Parks mentioned some important, every time that I, not anymore, but initially, people always kept saying, what does the county do? You know, this is a really, really good general information. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Supervisor Foy is here, over to item seven, consent items 11 to 19. Is there any concerns there from, if not, then we have a motion. And I'll second that motion to approve. Let's vote. And that is approved. So then our next item, Brian, is 26. And that's the, who do we have here, library? Good morning.
Good morning Supervisors and Mr. Powers. I'm Jackie Griffin, the Director of the County Library, and I have three items before you this morning, all of them reflecting the incredible generosity of our Friends groups throughout the county. The first item on the agenda is the approval of an agreement with the Ojai Friends to operate a meeting room. The Ojai Friends built a meeting room onto the back of their bookstore in order to accommodate our need for programming space. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions to Jackie? Well, Jackie, continue to do good work. I know in El Rio, you've done excellent work for the, our folks there, so...
Thank you.
I'm sure that Ojai is going to be very happy about that.
And just thank you for the Ojai Valley Library Friends and Foundation. That is a wonderful contribution, and thank you.
It is amazing.
So we need a motion on that? Okay, first and a second. Okay, that's approved. Thank you Jackie. Item 27, and this is the Port Huaynimi.
Yes, and I do want to recognize that the President of the Port Huaynimi Friends is here in the audience this morning, Arlene Fraser. And again, this just reflects the generosity and the incredible support and the hard work for both of this, item number 27 and 28. These are, these funds are raised by selling one used book after another in their, in their bookstores or on their carts. It's a pretty amazing activity.
Okay, any questions?
And if you wanted to donate books, where would you go? Just drop, I, I just, you know, just a little plug.
Arlene, do you want to, you want to come up for two seconds? You know, I, Arlene, of course, you know, is with the harbor also.
Yes.
The Port Huaynimi Harbor. She's a commissioner there.
Good morning, and thank you Supervisors. Yes, we're very honored to have Jackie working with us and motivating us to, you know, upgrade the library and all the citizens and friends there. And we'd appreciate Supervisor Long to come and visit us, because I know the previous Supervisor Long did a lot of visits to Port Huaynimi and especially the library. And so as Supervisor Zaragoza. So thank you, everyone. We really appreciate working with all of you.
And thank your husband for being here with you this morning, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You can donate books at any of our libraries.
Wonderful, thank you. And I will be doing a library tour. I think it's on our docket, so it'll be coming up soon.
Excellent.
Yes. Okay, that's approved. Thank you Jackie. 28, this is for Ventura. Friends of Ventura.
It's a great morning for the libraries.
It is.
Thank you very much.
So we need a motion for 28?
I motioned it. And thank you Ventura Friends of the Library too.
Also, could you discuss what we are having tomorrow evening for the Libraries Foundation?
Tomorrow evening is a small gathering of the Library Foundation with supporters in the community to raise more awareness of the fundraising for the Bookmobile and for potentially finding some new members of our, of our foundation board.
And so that's always something out there, the idea of bringing a Bookmobile that could go countywide. And so I know that we can also solicit funding for people who'd like to donate.
Yeah, and I'll just take this moment to say something I just found out yesterday, which is, we were discussing the Bookmobile as a countywide, since as we know, some of our cities have their own libraries. And I just, and, and we discovered that we have 151,000 library cards from cities where they have their own libraries. Those people also own Ventura County library card. So as you can see, we're really supporting our citizens' needs throughout the county.
So they can use both libraries?
They can absolutely use both libraries, and we were really pleased to find out that 151,000 of them were.
That's very significant.
And also, it's not just books in your hand, but using Overdrive.
Yes.
The Overdrive is fabulous. Because if you're done with a book, you can go online, get another book, and be ready to go.
Yes, we have over 350,000 eBooks now, plus we... Yes, we have over three hundred and fifty thousand eBooks now, plus we have over seventy databases, all of which you can use twenty-four hours, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year from your home.
And also, could you update us, there was a, a significant contribution, wasn't there, to the Foundation, I don't know if we've had a report on that?
Yes, the Premier America Credit Union donated fifty thousand dollars towards the purchase of the Bookmobile, they are our founding sponsor, so we're really very pleased by that.
Do you have a timeframe in which you're thinking the Bookmobile might be up and going?
If it were my timeframe, it would be, it would be very quickly, but since we're dependent on the fundraising of the community, I can't, I can't actually give you a date for that, I wish I could.
All right, and I know that our Board has also pledged some funds towards that, so hopefully we, this year would be a good time.
I, I would be so pleased with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is Supervisor Long, item twenty-nine.
Yes, I'm recommending that, for the Chair, to sign a letter for the California Department of Transportation opposing the roundabouts as a part of the California State Transportation, State Route 126 Safety Enhancement Project. And what this is, is there, there were some studies, we had community outreach on what to do with the 126, Caltrans came out and was suggesting the 126 and having roundabouts in certain areas, and the community in Santa Paula and Fillmore and so forth stated no, how do we stop this right now, how do we not pay any money and just not do more research on the roundabouts? The Santa Paula and Fillmore cities are supporting this letter, because it is in incorporated areas as well, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to also support not having the roundabouts. There are other ways in which to provide safety, the concern with the roundabouts, if you have two semis going around, how much space and land do you have to have it to make it safe, and, and so forth, so I would ask that we would present this letter in opposition of doing the roundabouts, they will still continue, and there's other ways to make it safe, but the roundabouts taking our agriculture and our land and so forth, that's why I'm asking for the opposition.
I understand also that our safety individuals are concerned about that.
Yes, safety is concerned about that as well.
And they've done some enhancements already, you know, with the?
Yes, they have done some enhancements, there are issues on, on the 126 from our farmers' agriculture, where semi is coming onto the 126, and they have to do a ninety-degree because it's coming off their property and onto the road, they've, they've got K rails and so forth on certain items, that's what they're going to propose, Caltrans states that they were going to come back in the spring of two thousand and seventeen with what they would like to suggest, but what we want to make sure is that our community is heard, and stating that they do not want the roundabout.
And the City Council of Santa Paula is concerned, and City Council of Fillmore are concerned?
Yes, they are also have approved these letters at their meetings as well.
Okay, a motion?
And I definitely respect the fact that you're representing the community, and you've heard from the community, and they are opposed to this, I also am concerned about the loss of farmland, so if you have a, a lot of land dedicated for the roadway, you're losing farmland, but I don't think as a policy overall for the county that we should be rejecting the concept, because I think they still have the potential of being good, perhaps in smaller areas, not on major highways, but it, it can help reduce, for example, traffic on residential streets and things like that, so, but I do, I do respect the fact that you're supporting your community and will support the motion.
Thank you. I, I do agree, and just to hit on that a little bit, I agree that roundabouts work in certain situations.
That's right.
And I'm only asking for this section, that we're not considering it.
And I think, you know, Santa Paula knows well, and Fillmore knows their, their communities, and, I mean, I travel 126 all the time, too, when I head up north, so I think it's important that we support, especially public safety individuals, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so first and second, and a vote. Okay, that's approved, and our next item is item thirty, Supervisor Parks.
Yes, this is an item, I have an opening on the Women's Economic Roundtable, and we have, I believe it's Commander Cheryl Wade has offered to serve, and I know she has been doing wonderful work in the Sheriff's Department, helping to mentor women, and I heard a, a great speech she made at the Association of American University Women, and I would hope that we can encourage her to continue this work, so this is a great way, and I would like to nominate her to be on the Women's Economic Roundtable, I know she's supported by the women there, and she also serves on a subcommittee there.
And I also support her, we, she came to our office, and we wanted to put her on, but we had already had made the decision, and I thank you Supervisor Parks for giving her this opportunity, I know she will do great.
Yeah, and, and thank you for reminding me, this is someone from your district, not my district, usually the process is to appoint people from your own district, but I know that she is a stellar candidate, I didn't want to let that go, and also, these are short-term, so I will have another opportunity to get someone from District Two on shortly, no doubt.
Well, we beat you to the vote here. Thank you, that's approved. Item thirty-one is, again, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you, the Casacaneo Municipal Advisory Council voted at their last meeting to take their seven-member board and make it a five-member board with an alternate, this is because, this is the only seven-member board in the County Municipal Advisory Council, and we have found that getting enough people there for a quorum is more difficult, because you have a, a larger body to start with, so they agreed that they would like to go to a five-member Municipal Advisory Council, and voted to ask the Board that we do that. I like the idea of an alternate, we have that at the Casacaneo, the SOMAS MAC, and that works out nice, so if one MAC member isn't able to come, you have that alternate, so I think that's a great idea. I know we had a couple of comment letters, one was saying we should have asked the MAC, we did ask the MAC, also requesting that we have it by election, I think that would be great, I know that it is a cost factor, though, so that might be something that we can pursue if that is the desire of the MAC, but at this point, the request is to change the MAC from seven to five members with an alternate. The County Council has put together the ordinance to do that, and his recommended approach was to essentially change the MAC, I guess, kind of disband it and start it again with, so it'll be the same appointees, is that correct?
Well, that's great, just, just to clarify the terms of the members who are going to continue.
Is my phone?
In the future, then?
The terms are clear, as they, as they renew.
So that, that's, that's the, why we chose the process, but it will be the same members, no one's losing their seats or anything on this, so with that, I'll make the motion.
First and a second, this vote, and that's approved, then I have item thirty-two, that's reappointing Dr. Cesar Morales to the Children's and First Family Commission of Ventura County, and he's an excellent choice, you know, he's Superintendent of Oaxart School District. Motion, this vote, and thank you, so, we, I think, we broke a record today, we?
Yes.
No, thirty-five, okay. And we are going to be in recess till about ten o'clock, because we don't have a closed session, so.
We'll be in closed session?
No closed session.
No closed session. Resess!
We'll be back.
Good morning, we're going to continue with our February fourth Board of Supervisors meeting, and we have item twenty, and this is a public hearing regarding adoption of an amendment to twenty sixteen nineteen memorandum of agreement, and, okay.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, members of the Board, CEO Powers, for the record, my name is Mike Kerner with Labor Relations in the County Executive Office, the item for you today is a recommendation for your Board to hold a second public hearing on the adoption of an amendment to the twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen agreement between the County of Ventura and the Service Employees International Union of the seven two one. Additionally, we ask that you approve and adopt a resolution to amend the salaries of the Public Safety Dispatcher One, Public Safety Dispatcher Two, and Supervisor Public Safety Dispatcher classification.
Okay.
In summary, these items will provide for a salary adjustment to the Public Safety Dispatcher classification to reflect those of the comparable classification amongst the Sheriff's Technical Communications Specialist Class Series, and this is done to account for the loss of regularly scheduled overtime as a result of the Fire Communications Center's transition from a twenty-four hour to a twelve-hour schedule. Additionally, we ask that you update the market-based adjustment amounts of the Public Safety Dispatcher classifications to reflect those of its comparable classification amongst the Sheriff's Technical Communications Specialist Class Series to ensure equity among these similar class series. The proposed amendments as per the fire district's fiscal operations have an estimated fiscal impact of approximately twenty-nine thousand five hundred through fiscal year seventeen eighteen, and finally, the proposed amendment has also been reviewed by the Civil Service Commission and was determined to have no adverse impact on the personal rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to open the public hearing, I don't have any, any cards, any, so I'm going to close the public hearing, board members, any questions, we've got a first and a second, please vote. And that's approved, and you have item twenty-one, okay, Sean, okay.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, Supervisors, and Mr. Powers, CEO, my name is Sean Otten, I'm the Human Resources Director, the item before you today is for the Ventura Employee Association, a request for a second public hearing on the adoption of the memorandum of agreement, and thereafter, the adoption of the actual recommended memorandum of agreement. The MOA is for two years and ten months, ending December two thousand and nineteen, we had six productive meetings with the VEA, and I want to recognize and recommend them for their professionalism and, and the partnership. The key items in the MOA were three separate one and a half percent general salary increases, market-based adjustment of one percent for the, in the first year, fifty-dollar per pay period increase in flex credit allowances at the end of February for this year, and two additional fifty dollars increases beginning in December two thousand seventeen and December two thousand eighteen, an annual allowance of up to one hundred and fifty dollars per employee for professional licenses recognized by the State of California, and fifty-dollar term, fifty thousand dollar term life insurance policy for each employee after the completion of an RFP and approval by your Board. The MOA has been ratified by, by the members of the VEA, it was ratified on February first, the average increase per year is three point two percent, so it's within the amounts assumed by the actuaries for the SARA retirement system, and so has no significant impact on, on contributions there, and with that, I'm open to take any questions.
Thank you, Sean, I have one speaker card, any questions from the Board at this time, okay, Erin McKent?
Good morning, Board, my name is Erin McKent, and I represent the VEA, just wanted to mention about negotiations, it was stated that one of the goals was to get within ninety-five percent of the median salary, while we agree with the goal, one of the problems is, is that the seven counties considered really get us into ninety percent of the counties we're competitive with, and I just brought an illustration. Last week, we heard the Board talk about the cost of housing, and as you can see, the cost of housing in the pink counties, which we believe as a professional unit are the ones that were really competitive, or that you should be trying to be competitive with, this is the cost of housing, and as you can see, Ventura is right in the middle between Santa Barbara and Los Angeles for cost, two hundred and eighty-five percent of the national average, but when we compare the cost to Kern and San Bernardino and Riverside, we really come in at about ninety percent median salary, and it's your county and your Board, and, I mean, you guys could set it to eighty, seventy, but if you think ninety-five is going to be competitive, it's got to be ninety-five of those four. Recently, since the last contract, we've had about ten percent of our members move on to other counties, I mean, the real estate market for appraisers has gotten a lot better, the engineering market, a lot of cities are hiring right now, including Simi Valley has an open engineering position, we just got notice that one is going to the state, so it's about ten percent of our members, and if people want to live by the coast, they can't commute from Kern or San Bernardino, they're going to live in LA, San, Santa Barbara, or Ventura, so I feel that next time we have to focus on that's what we're competitive with, thank you.
Thank you, Erin, and you support the, you support the, the, the item?
The members voted to ratify.
To support it, yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, I don't have any other speakers, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'll, I'll move the item, and this is the second hearing on it, so we already voted once.
Okay, please vote. And that's approved, thank you, thank you. Okay, item twenty-two is a receiving file presentation announcing the Healthcare Foundation for Ventura Counties, We Give Employee Giving Program Annual Campaign, so.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and CEO.
Good morning.
Happy Valentine's Day, let's see, well, this year marks our third consecutive year for We Give, our kickoff, and we have a little celebration out front, so please join us afterwards for refreshments and chocolates and oranges and water, so, the, we're excited to, let me, there it goes, you were right, Brian, so, Healthcare Foundation for Ventura County is a public benefit corporation and nonprofit organization designed to give back to Ventura County Healthcare Agency exclusively, one of the, its purpose is to enhance and augment the Ventura County Healthcare Agency, and one of the ways, one of the first things that we were charged with when we started in two thousand and fourteen was our, the Employee Giving Program, We Give Employee, We Give Employee Giving Program. Every year on Valentine's, we distribute about nine thousand of these cards to all of our employees Ventura County-wide, and it gives a way for our, our county employees to be able to give back to the, to the healthcare system that cares for them. One of the, one of my favorite stories last year was one of our nurses that came up to me, and she gave, came to me and gave me one of these cards, and she said, Amy, I want to be a We Giver, and I said, well, Pam, thank you so much, and she said, no, I want you to look at the amount, and I looked down at the amount, and she said, and I said, oh, I said, that's really generous, and she said, that's the money that I used to spend on cigarettes.
Oh.
And she said, I have given up smoking, and she said, now I'm dedicating all those monies towards giving back to the healthcare agency that supports me.
So Amy, that must have been pretty significant, huh?
It was very significant, it was a very significant count.
Not only because of the smoking, but the money.
Yeah, yeah, and she, she said, I'll never feel it, because for decades I have been smoking, and I have spent this money on cigarettes, but now I'd like to give this money and give it, because every dollar goes back to dollar for dollar, so no monies are taken out for administration fees.
Great.
So she felt really good about this, and this was something that was, it was very impactful for us.
Very good.
So We Give, so the Employee Giving is currently the, the third consecutive year for Employee Giving, and last year, I'm happy to report, that we implemented We Give Retiree Opportunity, Giving Opportunity, we're the only county in the state of California that has our retirees standing arm in arm with all of our employees, wanting to give back to the healthcare system that takes care of them and keeps our community healthy. In addition, we have clinic giving, and this year we'll be taking that to an all-time new high, too, with forty-five clinics. Different ways to give on We Give is through payroll deduction, so a lot of employees find it a lot easier throughout the year to be able to take a small deduction for every payroll deduction, and others is the annual leave deduction for up to forty hours, and there are very few counties that actually allow for employees to be able to do that, and thank you to our county for being progressive in that area, and then other people still will do a one-time contribution, and again, a hundred percent of the proceeds are invested back into local healthcare, right here in our own Ventura County Healthcare Agency. our own Ventura County Healthcare Agency. So together, these are... I always say it's in our hands, and together, we can make a difference. A lot of times, you know, we realize that maybe it's just something small that we're giving, but what we realize is that collectively, if we give, it's very, very impactful. And so we all stand together strong when together, we can make a difference like this. And lately, the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, just had an article on February 1st about the employees making a different difference in their communities through employee giving, and that's exactly what we're doing here, and they were applauding that effort as well. This is a picture of Ron Nelson, one of our sheriffs, and he's been a We Giver from the very beginning. And one of the nice parts about being a We Giver is this identification tag. And this is a physical identification unifier for all of our employees, where we're creating a culture of philanthropy together. And so Ron Nelson, he's just one of the many, but I wanted to kind of show you what it looks like when we have our We Give tag hanging on our county credentials. So again, collective gifts, large and small, make a meaningful impact in the healthcare that we deliver every day. And that brings me to the next family that I would like to bring up, the Jones family. This is Gavin Jones. He's one of our VCMC Emergency Department nurses, and his beautiful daughter, Morgan, and his lovely wife, Shelley.
Welcome.
So go ahead, I'll start then.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for your time and your generosity. This beautiful girl, of course, is Morgan, and this is how she started life. I'll try to keep it together here. But anyway, in 2014, November 29, she was born, a very healthy, normal girl, no complications during her pregnancy at all. But within a 12-hour period of her being born completely healthy, she started to become unresponsive. She started turning yellow, she started turning jaundice, and immediately, she was taken from the postpartum unit of VCMC immediately over to the NICU, where they did some immediate blood work on her and found out she was becoming what's called acidotic, as well as anemic. Within another two-hour period, her hemoglobin had dropped by over half, and her abdomen was becoming more and more distended. And nobody knew the answer why. And immediately, they called for an ultrasound. They weren't able to see where her spleen was in her abdomen because of a tremendous amount of clotting that was going on. And within no time at all, they started what's called the mass transfusion protocol to keep her alive. And they started giving her a lot of blood product essentially. Within a very short time, on a very rainy night on Friday evening, they were able to fly a helicopter out from UCLA to transfer her immediately to UCLA. If not for the efforts of the neonatologists, as well as the nurses and respiratory therapists, she would not be alive, because in that very short amount of time, they were able to establish central lines, get her intubated, and keep her stabilized long enough to keep her alive. They transferred her down to UCLA, and by that point, she had gone into a condition where, which is essentially called DIC, where she lost all of her body's ability to clot. And you can see from her purple legs that she had gone into compartment syndrome, and she had lost circulation to her legs because of the amount of pressure that was exerted on her vena cava, her aorta, due to the abdominal distension. They repeated ultrasound, weren't able to see her spleen, and right there, I've got my hand on her, and we said goodbye to her because they rushed her off to surgery. We didn't think she was going to come back. The surgeons were a little bit apprehensive because they thought that she might hemorrhage out, and then they opened her up, and they weren't able to see what was going on. As it turned out, her spleen did rupture, and the next day, she was still with us. And then her lung collapsed, to make matters worse. After a week of being at UCLA, we asked that she be transferred back to VCMC. And it's only because of the expertise at VCMC, they were comfortable in doing that, because ordinarily, they would have wanted to keep her down at UCLA, which was a tremendous hardship on us, because even the Motel 6 out of West LA is about $300 a night. And you can imagine, we didn't want to exactly leave her bedside, as it was, we were already sleeping on the benches in the waiting room. They got her back to VCMC, spent another week there and stabilized her, and it turned out that she had a... She's a one-in-billions child. There's only been 20 reported cases of this ever happening, 18 of which were fatal because they weren't caught in the timely enough fashion. She's two of two people on this entire planet that have ever had this condition to survive, and if not for VCMC, she would not be here today.
That's fascinating, that's just...
Yeah. She'll be on antibiotics prophylactically until she's about 12 years old, because she's immunocompromised, and because of the services that are offered to us by the pediatric intensivists behind us at the clinic, we've got great care. And it's a credit to the team at VCMC and the county for her being here, being able to sing to you today. So, thank you.
She's lovely. Thank you so much for sharing. She's a beautiful young lady. Thank you so much for sharing, and thank you for the...
And knowing that we set up the NICU and got the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, and hearing the feedback is just wonderful, because that was... It's pretty remarkable that we have it, and I'm so glad that it is supported. Thank you.
And thank you to the VCMC staff also for the good work, and Amy for everybody, and thank you for her beautiful little baby. Thank you so much. She was out there crying with you, you know that, huh? Thank you so much.
And also, we should give thanks to Dr. Brian Wong, our VCMC Medical Director, who's come in support of us and the We Give and the county.
Like always, Dr. Wong.
And Dr. Wong, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good job for that.
So it's because of that kind of care and these kind of stories that, you know, enhancing and augmenting our system, and your dedication to providing a hospital and staff is so important. So this, over the past two years, we happily gained 5% county participation and a 7% growth in dollars and donors. The retirees, as I said, joined us, and we're the only retiree giving opportunity in the state of California. In 2017, we're looking forward to adding more employees and having them participate and join our We Giving circle here, and see an overall growth of at least 10%, where our clinics have also vowed to lean in with us. So we have a total of 45 clinics, and they're looking forward to being a part of our We Give family as well. Last year, the impact contribution was $60,000 to aid in the purchase of portable dental equipment that'll outfit two mobile vans that will circle countywide and deliver dental care to all of our children regardless of their ability to pay. This has been a longstanding need in our county, and we were thrilled to be able to support in this way. And last, we'll be outside in the atrium with our table, and today, if people sign up, we will have cell phone wallets for your cell phones, and actually have our lapel, the lapel pins or tags that you can hang. And we really appreciate the opportunity to be of service every day, waking up and being of service to the people who deliver care every day is truly an honor. So thank you very much.
Amy, other than the employees being able to give, how about the public? Do we have a...
Absolutely.
Is there a website for the public to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can you share the website now?
Sure. www.hcfvc.org, and all donations are tax deductible.
So from a dollar to a million dollars, you can give?
Absolutely, yeah. So with employee giving or...
Mr. Fo... Thank you so much for...
Thank you, appreciate it.
Kelly?
Just thank you very much, it's a great program.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be of service.
And I know with being able to pay for the executive director, that we can have 100% of all donations go strictly to the foundation for services and equipment. So that's great for the people who are donating to know. Oftentimes, you worry when you do donate to some nonprofit somewhere, you might end up having, you know, 15, 20, even more percentage going for administration, so it's nice to have that.
Very unique, very powerful, and very engaging. And a lot of our community partners are giving as a result of that, because they know that when they're out raising money in our community, they can give 100,000, and 100,000 will go directly to exactly what they're looking for, not to overhead.
And do you also have, like, people who want to leave funds in their trusts or their wills?
Actually, very good point. Actually, I will tell you, there at the bottom of the card, on the We Give card, but yes, planned giving is an opportunity. There's a box that said, that says, "Yes, I'm interested in receiving information on estate and planned giving." And I had a young nurse that came up to me and had that box checked, and they are rather young, and they said, "We, you know, if something terrible happened, and my wife and I were, and our children were gone, we want all of our money to go to Healthcare Foundation, because we know every dollar will go back." So that was...
Very good.
It was really powerful. Yeah, so yes, thank you.
To your point, Supervisor, in fact, we'll be bringing to your board in the next few weeks, a sizable donation from a trust in the six figures to VCMC out of appreciation. And I wanted to thank you, Amy, and all the We Give champions who are here today from our county family. I mean, this shows the generous spirit we have in our county family here, and I think Gavin's story said it all about the quality, and we'll do whatever it takes, and the compassion. And that's what's provided to everybody in our community, our county employees, but also those facing barriers to access in our community. And I think that's just reflective throughout our entire system. So just thank you so much for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you do have refreshments out there, is that what it is?
I do. I hope to see you out there.
Okay. Because we're receiving file, and we probably have, probably going to have about a 10-minute break here, because our next time item is at 10:30, so... Thank you, Amy, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me be of service.
Absolutely. Motion received. Okay, I'll go ahead. Thank you, that's approved, and we'll be back at 10:30. Is Sean? Good morning. We're going to resume our meeting for the Board of Supervisors for February 14th, and this is item 23, receiving filed a presentation of quarterly service recognition for employees of over 25 years of county service. Sean?
All right, thank you, Chair Zaragoza. I just thank you, Board members, for allowing us this time today to celebrate nearly 800 years of county service. All right? And thank you for the employees for being here, allowing us to recognize you. We really appreciate it. This is the strength of our county family, that dedication and commitment to service and our mission in this many years, and to your coworkers for being here, as well as your family members. So with that, Sean, take it away, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We have 26 people today, and it's my pleasure to introduce them to you. When I read your name, please come down, and my assistant, Paulie Lozana here, will provide you a certificate, and then please stay here. At the end, we'll do a group photograph. So with that said, the first person is Bebe Betker. Bebe Betker is a registered nurse 2 at the Healthcare Agency. She has 25 years of service. She has worked for Ventura County Medical Center. She's worked for the VCMC for 25 years as a registered nurse in all aspects of nursing. She enjoys teaching and guiding nurse students, nursing staff, and physicians in the care of patients. She is truly a nursing savant and a joy to work with. Thank you, Bebe, for your service at the County of Ventura. Okay. Next is Jose Alderate, and I apologize if I mispronounce names in advance. He's an employment services supervisor at the Human Services Agency. He has 25 years of service. Jose served in multiple capacities during his career, most recently being promoted to an employee's employment services supervisor. Recently, he's been instrumental in getting welfare-to-work engagement process up and running, reducing the amount of time it takes to get clients into their first activity after their case has been approved. He would like to thank his past and present supervisors and managers for giving him the opportunity to work on various projects that allowed him to advance over the years. Luz Olmos is a client benefit specialist 4 at the Human Services Agency. She has 25 years of service. Luz began her county Ventura career in March 1982. She resigned after 10 years, but two weeks after, she came back and was rehired. There must have been... She must have missed us. She's continuously worked for the county ever since, and we appreciate her endless dedication, her exemplary customer service. Thank you so much, Luz. Paula Petrosi, Administrative Assistant at the Library with 25 years of service. Paula demonstrates true dedication to the cause of adult literacy. She works hard to help adults learn a vital skill that most of us take for granted. Her passion and dedication for helping others is admirable. Through her work, she's literally changed people's lives for the better. We thank her for her many years of service, of important work and service to the community. Ms. Dolores Reyes is... She's a Deputy Probation Officer at the Probation Department. She has 25 years of service. After graduation from high school, Ms. Reyes began working with the DA's office as an intermittent. She left the DA in 1986 to care for her family, returning to the DA's office in 1992. She was hired as a Deputy Probation Officer by the Probation Department in June 1999. Ms. Reyes has worked with adults and juveniles throughout her career. She's done an outstanding job serving the community. We wish her the very best when she retires later this month. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Robert Barnett, Correction Services Officer 2 at probation. He has 25 years of service. Mr. Barnett began his career with the county as a Sheriff's Services Technician, promoting to Sheriff's Technician 2 in 1997. In 2000, he was hired by the Probation Agency as a Corrections Services Officer 1 at the Clifton-Tatum Center, i.e. the juvenile hall, promoting to a Corrections Service Officer 2 in 2003. While working with the juvenile population for 12 years, he was characterized as the utmost professional and skillful at de-escalating youth in distress by maintaining a calm demeanor. In 2012, Mr. Barnett transferred to the Work Release Program. He continues to maintain a positive attitude, professionalism, and a great work ethic. Thank you, Robert, for your service. James Harmon, Senior Attorney, Public Defender, with 25 years of service. Mr. Harmon began working as a Ventura County Deputy Public Defender in December 1991. Throughout his 25 years, Jim's represented both juveniles and adults. He has a passion for helping clients suffering from mental illness, and has coordinated the office's participation in the annual NAMI Walk. Jim also enjoys volunteering and commits his time to judge high school mock trial scrimmages for the Ventura County High Schools. On his personal time, you may see him on the beaches of Ventura, where Jim works as a part-time seasonal state park lifeguard. His 25 years of dedication to Ventura County and the less fortunate people in our society, and guiding our youth towards a successful and meaningful lifestyle is admirable and commendable. Thank you so much. Kat Robles, Inspector 3, Public Works Agency. Kat Robles began his county career with Development and Inspection, DIS Services. He worked as a grading inspector for six to seven years and inspected grading for the Lake Sherwood Development, excuse me. Kat has been married for 25 years and is a proud father of two sons. He's a gun enthusiast... He's a gun enthusiast and loves American muscle cars, including American-made hot rod cars such as the Mustangs and Chevys. Kat is a dedicated county employee and a valuable member of the public PWATD. Thank you, Kat, for your service. Ed Alameo, RMA Tech Three, Resource Management Agency, has 25 years of service. The Environmental Health Division would like to thank Ed Alameo for his 12 years of dedicated, dedicated service working as vector control, in the, in the vector control program as a mosquito control technician. Prior to joining Environmental Health, Ed worked for 14 years with the County Agricultural Commissioner's Office as a Quarantine Officer, where he was the lead quarantine officer, intercepting a record number of quarantined rated pests into the state. This included intercepting over $100,000 in illegal drug money coming in, uh, through the Terminal Inspection Program. Ed is dedicated to his job as well as to the public. Thank you, Ed, for your service. Angela Daniel Gibson, Program Assistant with the Sheriff's, has 25 years of service. And Angela began her career in the county service in 1991 with the Animal Regulation Department, where she served as a veterinary technician for over four years. She accepted a position at the DA's office, where she served for 20 years in a variety of assignments. She is dedicated and honored to serve the Sheriff's Office in her current assignment as the Program Assistant to the Sheriff, to Sheriff Dean and under Sheriff Prentice. She is truly thankful to serve in this beautiful county where she's enjoyed raising her family. Thank you, Angela, for your service to the County of Ventura. Danny Alvara, Records Tech Three at the Clerk and Recorder's Office. Danny has 30 years of service and started working with the Clerk and Recorder's Office as a two-year fixed-term employee in 1986. Shortly before his term expired, he applied for and received a full-time records technician position. Danny has a solid knowledge base of the clerk and recorder business and is praised by the public and his peers. He's invaluable to the agency, and we appreciate his dedication and service over the last 30 years. Thank you, Danny.
Some of these folks I can remember from going way back, so, uh, very honored to recognize Lori Smith from HCA for 30 years of service. Lori began her career with the county as part of Behavioral Health and was one of the original three team members that started the newly-formed Healthcare Agency Human Resources Department. She has a wealth of institutional knowledge that her manager calls upon to explain the reasoning process that have long been in place. She's the face and voice of CEO, HR, HCA Division. She brings a soothing and calming presence to a very fast-paced organization. Managers, employees, and applicants repeatedly take the time to express to Lori's managers their appreciation for her willingness to take the extra steps to find answers and meet their needs. On a personal note, Lori is highly creative and surprises us each year with elaborate Halloween costumes. They were very impressive, yes. We really appreciate Lori's part of our team, uh, and I can just say that no matter what is going on, she is always smiling and positive and just a great role model for customer service. So thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Manuela Ruiz is an Office Assistant Four with the Human Services Agency and has 30 years. She has 30 years of service. Manuela was a typist clerk for 10 years and served as an, and has served as an Office Assistant Four for the past 20 years. She's very dedicated to providing great customer service and has always been a true professional with customers and staff. You can always count on Manuela to give you her very best and have a positive attitude every day. Manuela would like to acknowledge and thank Betty Thomas, who hired her 30 years ago. Thank you, Manuela, for your service. Mr. William Markoff is a Senior Attorney at the Public Defender's Office and has, he has 30 years of service. In 1986, Mr. Markoff transitioned from the private sector to the Ventura County's Public Defender's Office. He feels privileged to fight to protect the rights of Ventura's indigent population from the most petty misdemeanors to the most serious felonies, and is proud that those fights alongside all the Ventura public defenders over the years has helped to preserve the individual rights and freedoms of every member of the Ventura County family. When not serving in a courtroom, William cherishes the time with his wife Tricia and their dogs Sophie and Roscoe. William is looking forward to spending more time playing his guitar and golf in his retirement years. Thank you for your service. Thank you so much.
It is my privilege to recognize Steve Lipson, our public defender, for 30 years Steve models through his 30-year career the character intelligence and grit that inspire others to follow. He believes in leadership by example and has inspired countless lawyers by his example. He is known for pouring his heart and soul into each case and believes that people are better than the worst thing they ever did. A graduate from UCSB and Oregon, Steve passed the bar in 1984. He began his, began his career in the county in 1986, working his way up to Chief Deputy in 2006. In 2008, he was again promoted to Assistant Public Defender, and in 2010, he assumed the role as the Public Defender. He works on both the national level as a board member and then President of the National Legal Aid Defense Association, as well as the local level as a chief public defender for our county. He and his wife Katie enjoy morning walks on the beach with their small mixed breed mutt Guthrie. And thank you, Steve, for your years of service to the county, and I just want to say too, uh, how much I appreciate your leadership, Steve. Uh, you really are a role model for all of us, and how much respect you have amongst the entire law enforcement community. I know our sheriff, our DA, our probation department, so I think that speaks really well of you.
Dana Lynn Trotter Kramer, Crime Analyst Two at the Sheriff's, at the Sheriff's Department, has 30 years of service. Dana has been a crime analyst with Ventura County Sheriff's Office since November 1986. She's held positions at the Thousand Oaks and Camarillo stations as Ventura County's liaison to the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, and as the Ventura County Terrorism Liaison Officer Coordinator. She's currently working in the Special Services Bureau Crime Analysis Unit. Dana has also had a collateral, Dana, I'm so sorry. Dana has also had collateral assignments over the years as Public Information Officer and as a member of the Office of the Emergency Services Response Team. Since she started her career with the Sheriff's Office, she became a mother and raised a son, who is currently a Ventura County firefighter. Her employment with the Sheriff's Office has allowed her to see firsthand how technology has improved law enforcement operations. Thank you for your service. Mr. Michael Parigian. Is an Assistant Forensic Science Sciences Laboratory Manager at the Sheriff's Department with 30 years of service. Michael joined the county family in 1987 as a criminalist in the Ventura County Sheriff's Crime Lab. He started the DNA Lab Laboratory and is an accomplished manager and a recognized leader in his field. He's committed to safeguarding the lives and property of the residents of Ventura County. Again, thank you, Michael, for your dedication to the county. Commander Ronald Nelson with the Sheriff. Commander Nelson has 30 years of service, uh, with the Sheriff's Office, with assignments in three jail facilities, five patrol stations, detective assignments, administrative positions, and media relations. He currently serves as the commander at the Todd Road Jail and is honored to have contributed to the safety of Ventura County residents. Your service to the County of Ventura is appreciated, Commander. Thank you so much. Mr. Valenzuela is a Telecom Network Analyst Two at ITSD. He has 35 years of service. In reflecting on his 35 years with Ventura County, Ruben credits humor and laughter as essential components for longevity on the job. That coupled with working with the best people imaginable in the best department has led to a great career with IT services. I think that, someone inserted that. In his spare time, Ruben enjoys gardening and spending time with his three grandkids, especially watching his granddaughter's softball games. Radford Jackson, Senior Auto Mechanic at GSA. Mr. Jackson has 35 years of service. He's a senior mechanic who has been with the county. He was born in Oxnard, is a graduate of Oxnard High School and UTI. He and his wife, Yvonne, have four children, sons, James and Isaiah, and daughters, Mariah and Victoria. He's an excellent employee and a dependable coworker who's well-liked by his colleagues. Thank you, Radford, for your service. Beverly Marinus, Administrative Assistant Two at the Healthcare Agency. Beverly has 35 years of service and has worked in multiple agencies across the county, most recently in Medical Staff Services Department as a Peer Review Coordinator since November 2005. She's been working with the medical staff leadership to develop quality performance reports for the physicians and allied health professional staff to meet the Joint Commission requirements for ongoing professional practice evaluations. Congratulations, Beverly, and thank you for all you've done. Vicky Nava is a Case Aid Two at the Human Services Agency, and she has 35 years of She has 35 years of service and started in, as a typist clerk in 1981, promoted to an Office Assistant, and finally to her current position as a Case Aid Two Meds Operator. She's reliable, hardworking, self-motivated employee who's always ready to jump in and help when need arises. Her team working skills are very much appreciated by her colleagues. Vicky's helpful and caring personality have been a wonderful contribution to the team. She cares about serving the public and appreciates to do so every day. We're fortunate to have her as a member of the Ventura County workforce. Thank you, Vicky. Claudio Frias, Maintenance Worker Four. Am I pronouncing the name right? Claudio, excuse me. Claudio has 40 years of service. In 1976, Claudio started his service with County Parks in the Recreation, in the Recreation Services Department as a Maintenance Worker One, and has remained with Parks his entire 40 years, promoting to Maintenance Worker Four. Special thanks to Claudio for his commitment to the County of Ventura and his many years of service.
Handoff. Okay, uh, it's my pleasure to recognize Sabrina Claymore Bentley for her 40 years of service. Sabrina began her career as a File Clerk in the Medical Billing Department at the quote, "General Hospital" in 1974. She worked a number of years in every department of the Patient Accounting Office. She spent the next 78 years in supervisory roles in ambulatory care, public health, radiology, and admitting. Then she began her IT career, implementing eight different computer systems. She still smiling? Yeah, good, yeah. She currently resides in the IT Informatics Department as an Integration Architect. Thank you, Sabrina, for all your wonderful years of service to our county. And finally, it is my great privilege to recognize, uh, from the Assessor's Office as a Data Entry Operator, Sue Aslan for her 50 years of service. Tired just thinking about it. Sue has worked for the County of Ventura Assessor's Office for 50 roll closes. She has worked for seven different assessors and has been in three different assessor's buildings. The Downtown Courthouse, the former grocery store strip mall location, and finally this main campus since they opened the doors for the first time. She has been here through pre and post Proposition 13, coming online the first day. She's been well-liked by all in our office throughout her years, and I know she loves working with all of us well. She's an integral part of our Data Entry Coding Department and has ensured that every roll closes goes without a hitch. Thank you, Sue, for your commitment to the County of Ventura, and congratulations on Just a quick thank you to Sean and Paulie for putting all of this together. Fantastic, good work.
Michael, 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 on behalf of the board, 50 years, Sue, that's tremendous. Sue, here's your chair up here. I was only 10 years old when you started with it. Come on, guys. But anyway, I want to thank everybody, though, that's 800-plus years, it's tremendous, you know, we're very fortunate to have, that's many good employees, long-term employees serving our community. Thank you so much, on behalf of the board, and I'm sure maybe the board members would like to share something, but I thank you so much for the good work that you've done.
I'm just, it's very appropriate that it's Valentine's Day, too. You know, you have to have a love and a passion for this job, and obviously for your long tenure, you do have it, and you have that public service in your heart, and then we just want to thank you for that. I know we deal, uh, with some of you at the board level, you know, from, um, uh, our public defender and, and Captain Nelson, Commander Nelson, but also just folks like Radford, oh my gosh, I remember when I, I used to have a, a car that he would assist with, one of the county cars, but I just so much appreciate everybody's work here. And if you look at Sue for 50-plus years that she's been here, so those of you who have just done 25 years, you still have a ways to go. But thank you all so much for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you again, and thank you so much. Thank you again, and thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna continue with our meeting for the Board of Supervisors for Feb. 14, and we have Item 24, and this is a public hearing regarding proposed rates and charges for District Number 38, Lake Sherwood. And Michaela.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa, members of the Board, CEO, Mr. Powers.
And I'm gonna open the public hearing, too, just as you continue.
For the record, I am Michaela Brown, Ventura County Director of Water and Sanitation. I'm here to present staff's proposal for rate changes for Water Works District 38 in Lake Sherwood. This proposal has been presented to and approved by the Citizens Advisory Committee. There are two primary reasons that we needed to have a rate change, because this is more than just a rate increase, it is also an adjustment on how we actually charge for water. One is increased cost to the district. Imported water costs increase an average of about 6% per year and continue to do so. Labor and material costs increase at a rate of 3% to 5% per year. For this district, it was about 2.5% total increase in O&M costs. In addition, capital needs of repair and replacement of aging water system infrastructure. In addition, we needed to make sure that our rate structure met Proposition 218 requirements, and a recent court case in San Juan, against the City of San Juan Capistrano, highlighted some challenges with the way we are currently charging for water that showed us that we weren't meeting the full requirements under Prop. 218.
Could I ask a question already? It talks about the district's costs have increased, and that is, it mentions the cost of imported water. Is there also a cost for increased energy?
Yes, electricity has gone up, as well as the labor rates for our O&M stuff.
I didn't see energy mentioned, but that would be just another one of those fixed -- the water costs, and also the energy is something you have to pay for regardless.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So this is our current structure. It's complex, it isn't particularly transparent, and nor is it equitable. You have the column for band, that's called a billing allocation number, and although you have some base bands depending on meter size, you have kind of an application process that, based on the individual circumstances, size of the house, size of the property, number of people in the home, can result in significant differences among customers in how much Tier 1 water they get. In addition, Tier 2 and 3 rates were punitive. We actually have a little penalty surcharge that we highlight there, and this was one of the things that was found particularly troublesome with the City of San Juan Capistrano.
So on this chart, when you have the billing allocation number, it goes from 1 to 119. Would 1, could you describe what the situation for 1 might be and what 119 will be?
So 1 would be a base allocation for a 3/4-inch meter. Band 3 is generally your base allocation for a 1-inch meter. And then any kind of extenuating circumstances, we have a kind of a complicated spreadsheet that my staff puts these numbers in to come up with some opportunities to have an increased allocation. The really high band, like 119, might be the golf course. And this is part of the challenge, is it really was based on if you needed more water and used more, then you got a higher amount of discounted water. So it was a little bit upside down. And then if you were a very, you know, did a lot of conservation, you could pay that lower Tier 1 cost, but you could have folks that would end up in Tier 2 pretty quickly, and their neighbors with similar-sized property would not be paying that higher charge.
Thank you.
So in order to ensure a fair and equitable allocation of costs, the district use a cost-of-service methodology, an industry standard developed by the American Water Works Association. And this slide defines what is cost-of-service. Basically, it's a rationale that different types of customers generate different costs because of the patterns or use, and use or characteristics are different. Cost-of-service allows the matching of rates charged to each group and specifically ties them to the cost of serving them, and each group will pay its own way and not incur additional higher costs that end up subsidizing somebody else paying a lower cost.
And Michaela, those are the 218 requirements, right?
Yes.
The cost-of-service is what?
The cost-of-service is to help us meet the 218 requirements to be able to allocate the cost. It's a methodology used within the industry. So here's a financial picture if we don't make any rate adjustments, and this district is pretty fortunate, we have very healthy reserves. However, you can see if we do nothing, those reserves do get drawn down. We would hit the zero mark on this plane by 2023. And the Citizens Advisory Committee has made me very aware of the fact that one of the reasons about $3 million or more of these reserves are based on connection fees we've collected for properties that are our customers, but the infrastructure out to them is still owned by the developer, and we need to hang on to that hefty reserve for when we eventually take over the entire system. And it might end up doubling the overall size of the piping we have to maintain, and some of them were built 10, 15 years ago, so we need to make sure we have that in place.
I appreciate that explanation, because somebody'd say, why do you have to hold that much money? But I appreciate it.
Exactly, exactly. So one of the things we want to establish is a reserve policy. We do have, right now, rate stabilization fund and some capital reserves, but there really hasn't been a highlighted policy on what we should have. The three parts of the reserves that we would like to establish are an operating component, which will have about three months of our O&M expenses, a rate stabilization component, which we're trying to capture and maintain 10% of our revenue requirements, and that helps us with the fluctuations from month to month between sales and costs, and a capital component funded by depreciation, the target of which for this district we propose is 2% of net assets, and that allows us to have enough money to be able to have those sizable repairs and unexpected events that might happen.
Subarisa Parks.
Thank you, if you knew. When we're talking about rate stabilization, I understand, so sometimes it goes up a little, down a little, and this fund would mean you don't have to keep going back for a vote. Is that right? How would that work, the rate stabilization?
It could help from year to year, where we might not have to increase rates every year, but it's really more designed so we wouldn't have to increase rates in the middle of the year. So if some unexpected portion of our budget went up in costs, we wouldn't immediately have to go back for a pass-through to try to get that increase. This would allow us to weather it until the next time.
Is that like a contingency fund, contingency fund, basically?
It can be used for that.
Or would that be what we've seen in the last three months, where I haven't turned my sprinklers on in three months, you aren't receiving revenue because I'm not paying, kind of a thing like that? Is that what you'd use that money for?
Correct, yes.
The reason I bring this up is because I know of other water districts in the county where it had been a long time before they had a rate increase, and as a result, they started dipping into reserves, and that kept going and going. It feels that if we use this rate stabilization fund, we just need to remember that we have to do these small increases regularly. If we see that they're coming down the line, there's going to be a 10%, 15%, 20%, it's a lot easier to do it in small chunks. So that's why I just want to make sure that this rate stabilization doesn't lead us to an all-of-a-sudden, a big jump. And so that's, I don't know if that could be put into the policy, but I think that's pretty essential.
I concur, and this next slide is an indication of the financial plan. We actually developed a five-year financial plan. Even though we're only looking at a one-year adjustment and increase in the rates at this time, we actually, our financial plan is predicated on an 8% adjusted adjustment to revenues for the next four years at least, and a smaller one in the out-years. But it's going to take us that long to kind of reach a stable place where then the annual increases would be minimal.
So you're showing that we're like 40% behind or something, and you're going to go 8% for four, five years?
Over the five years.
Over the five.
Are we, I mean, she makes a very good point on this, and I like this, but we're not really behind, but we're also going to be catching up, plus we got normal increases, so it adds that number.
We're catching up from the deficit and trying to do that.
Plus, you're just, your normal increases, you're expecting electricity.
Right, this is expectation of continued 6% a year increase in Cuyahoga Water. The state water we purchase is 70% of our costs, our operation maintenance costs for this district, so if they go up 6%, then that automatically is going to increase our costs by 4% at a minimum.
And we're not seeing anything in the future that shows that Cuyahoga Water is going to go down in price?
No, if anything, we might see some continued increases depending on infrastructure investments that are going to be passed through from metropolitan.
And in the Lake Sherwood area, they do have access to recycled water.
They do, and the golf course has taken advantage of that, so.
To some extent, as I recall, they also use imported water, too, or at least last I looked, it may have been a combination, but the idea that, no, maybe this is something for the Lake Sherwood Community District to look at, a potential of where they could start using more recycled water in landscaping, so they may not have to have this increase.
Absolutely, the discussions with the larger HOA.
Thank you.
Can I, oh, real quick, on your previous slide, is this with this district here, is this your model you're looking at most of the districts, is kind of you're going to set up a model like this, or are you only this district here?
No, this is going to be the standard, we hope that this will be the standard reserve policy for each district.
Right, and then when you look at capital, this is a pretty new district in the sense that a lot of that's not 100 years old, right?
Right.
And you put your 2% of net assets. Are you and some of your older districts going to change that number, will that vary because we got to catch up, we took over districts that are real old and those kind of things?
Right, part of what goes into the model for every district is looking at the five-to-10-year capital improvement plan, and in this one, we didn't really have anything significant in that, and so it's really just more a matter of ensuring that we're fully funding depreciation and, you know, a reasonable amount. So we're looking at putting about $1 million over the next five years, and that's not because we necessarily expect to spend that, but that way we'll have that as part of what we are anticipating.
Right, and I think going back to Subarisa Parks' point is, if we, if there's a little bit every year to cover these, we don't ever have to sit up here with these big 5 and 10 and 50 we've had to, your predecessors have had to deal with, and we can try to plan a little bit. It's easy for somebody to take a 2% or 3% every year than it is when all of a sudden it becomes, I need 12%, we got big capital, we got behind, and I think she made a good point there, so I appreciate where you're going with all this. This is great.
Thank you.
Subarisa, along.
My question on this was, so how much will the reserve be, not just percentage, but total amount of money?
I don't have that number.
I was confirming to make sure it was 4.8 million? Is that what you have on the next page?
No, the target reserve based on this policy is about 1.5 million.
Okay.
But that $3 to $4 million additional that we need is a buffer for when we take over the whole system, as I explained earlier.
Okay, I apologize.
The Citizens Advisory Committee was adamant that we keep that and don't touch that in the current operations.
Okay, so it's at 1 million, or the graph that I'm looking at is the line target reserve is about 1 million, and you currently have about 4.8 million. Okay, thank you.
Subarisa Parks.
No, thank you.
Okay.
So the next slide goes through the components of our water rates as we propose them. There are two primary parts of this. A customer bill has two parts. There's a fixed service charge portion that we call a meter charge, and then a commodities charge based on actual usage and the amount of water that you use. The commodity charge consists of a water supply cost, which in this district is 100% imported, a base delivery cost that captures all the fixed costs not recovered through the service or meter charges, and then a peaking cost that recover the extra capacity or peak demands onto the system for the various categories of customer usage. And this chart is to try to explain a little bit about the peaking charge. Basically, the system has to be sized for the largest expected usage, your peak day demand. If everybody used water kind of in the same rate and maybe minimized its indoor use, then the whole piping and pumps and systems could be a lot smaller. So the peaking costs capture the inefficiencies in the system because it has to be sized for that highest peak day demand. So the proposed water structure for this district is a meter charge, where we try to capture currently 8% of the revenue requirement. The American Water Works Association standard is recommends capturing 25% of your revenue requirements through the service charge because it kind of creates a funding stability from month to month, but because we're only capturing 8, we didn't think it was fair at this time to try to increase that substantially. The goal is to keep it at 8, and as we go forward in the following years, maybe increase that no more than 1% a year.
Okay, but so you're not saying that the target shouldn't be what they're telling you, you're just saying that we haven't done that, so we're just going to slowly get to that point?
Correct.
But we are going to try to get to that target.
We'll be evaluating that from year to year whether we need to and how high that really should be, but. And then the commodity rate.
Subarisa, along, do you have a question?
No.
No?
The commodity rate for single-family residential will still have three tiers. The difference is the tiers will be tied to usage. Tier 1 in particular, for 10 units, which is less than the lowest Tier 1 allocation is today. This is based on an American Water Works Association standard of 60 gallons per person per day for a family of four, and this is considered to be kind of the minimum average family indoor usage.
So you're trying to say here, I'm only going to give you water for indoor usage. We're not, you're going to pay if you want to water outside, is that what you're doing?
Well, the indoor water usage has a very low peaking charge because it's pretty much consistent, this is the amount of water that you're going to use for cooking, for cleaning, for showers, for laundry, and it's pretty much stable, steady state throughout the year. So anything above that is generally outside use, and that will fluctuate quite a bit, and as such, carries a higher peaking cost.
So it gives you, go back to your model of why you need because of a peak requirement?
Right, and that model allows us to allocate costs fairly for that Tier 1 allocation and provides a cost-based rationale for the development of the size of that tier as well as the cost.
So it'd be people who live in apartments, for example, condominiums, or don't use any water on their landscaping?
Or you have people even in larger homes, if they're just living two or three people and have no landscaping, they can, there are customers that stay underneath this.
Yeah, but that was one of my choices, too, but that would be strictly what your indoor use is.
Correct.
And I would imagine, particularly in this area, there aren't, I don't know, it's obviously going to be the smallest probably throughout the county, that Tier 1, few will be able to be in that currently.
Definitely, if you're doing any outdoor landscaping, you will likely be in Tier 2. So Tier 2 here is set at 63 units, and that is the average monthly unit for the district. So currently, Lake Sherwood averages 63 units per month throughout the year. And this, basically on the residential side, incorporates their outdoor irrigation and then, you have quite a, you have more variety than you would think there. You do have some townhouse-like structures.
They do.
And then you have some very, very large properties.
It's interesting that your Tier 2, your max, is at your average. Just as, as we're discussing this.
It's Tier 3.
It's interesting that we would set our average being at the max for Tier 3 and not the middle, but just to.
It's average.
Right, because it's tied into that previous slide with the pipe, that the average, again, has a certain peaking charge, but when we go above that, now we end up with single-day demands that are above and beyond what the average is for that district, and that incurs a higher peaking charge, so that's why that cutoff is done at that level.
And about that average, sorry, 63, is that like one of the highest in the county?
It's the highest in the four districts the county operates.
So of all the ones that we oversee, Lake Sherwood is the heaviest user of water?
Per customer.
Is that because of the size of the home, or?
Both, the size of the home, probably, and lots, right?
And lots, too.
Yeah, probably the lot size, a lot of landscape, a lot of vegetation.
The pool.
So what you're saying is because you're average, you're not trying to penalize them compared to somebody, some other district that might have a lot more.
Correct.
them compared to somebody, some other district that might have a lot more apartments, a lot more things.
Correct. The development and the cost associated with tier two is solely based on the usage characteristics of this particular category of customer.
I think that's good to take the characteristics of what they're doing, not compared to somebody else. I think that's good.
Correct. So having said that, here's the.
Right? You don't want to talk about that last year.
So this slide has the proposed water rates, the top portion of it showing the current and the proposed meter charges. So the biggest difference here is the current meter charges, we started with a baseline and then just doubled the number. Now we actually have an assigned meter capacity factor that factors in the cost of the meter, the customer service efforts on my staff, and, and then it's tied specifically to the capacity of that individual.
And Michaela, the two and three and four inch, kind of get a reduction there.
As I say, some people are seeing some light at the end of the tunnel.
That's right.
Not many, but.
That's right. But at least, you know, it's going down.
As you can see, the number of customers is primarily three-quarter and one-inch meters. And then I have a few slides highlighting some of the customer impacts. This chart shows that almost all the customers in this district have either three-quarter or one-inch meters. And I wanted to highlight that Waterworks District 38 is about a third of the way over from the left. So we're pretty competitive for meter charges. This is three-quarter inch. This is one inch. And we're, so for meter charges, we're competitive. And then here is the tier pricing for tier one, two, and three compared with some of the neighbors, Oak Park and Thousand Oaks, which are similar communities and nearby. And you can see that with the new pricing structure, we're still very competitive. In addition, if you look at the tier allocation, we're a little bit more than Oak Park and a little bit less than Thousand Oaks.
Looking at the, the comparison in rates, I think that's very informative. I think that would, something you want to share with the rate payers, particularly those who are protesting to see that they're actually at the low end, right?
And we have shared this, both with the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I've met with numerous public groups represented by the HLA's here.
That's a good point. Is this, is this something that when you send out a bill in that district, that your rates are going up, just want to compare what you're doing so people had an opportunity to see something like that? And Linda makes a good point. This is a really, the idea, because, you know, anybody getting a rate increase, what am I getting this rate increase for? But at least I can have something to say, wow, at least I don't pay as much as somebody in this district does or something like that.
We've actually posted the presentations we made to the Citizens Advisory Committee on our website. We had a frequently asked question document as well as a rate calculator that people could use to see what the actual impacts were to their bill.
I was just thinking, Linda, Bill, this isn't easy to see.
Yeah, it's better to let, you know, send it out than waiting for them to come to you to find out. But yeah, that, that previous chart was pretty informative, I think, and just showing the comparison and that you are at the low end. And one of my comments on this too is just, and particularly with the next one we're going to hear too, is to even it out so people are paying their fair costs. You know, that sounds like an essential thing that you want to do for government. But also, your slide had mentioned that you won't, people shouldn't be receiving subsidies essentially. But there's also the other end of the spectrum, that some people are paying too much. And I think we really need to represent them too. It's really important because they're overpaying what they need to pay. And it may be they didn't know that and are still protesting because they don't realize that their rates will actually go down. Thank you.
And in fact, this next slide shows that it was difficult to do direct rate comparisons because it was, a lot of the differences in cost of an individual bill might increase because they had a change in their allotment of tier one size. But you can see that in a customer base of a little over 700 customers, over 100 of them will actually see reductions in their bills. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm standing.
Finally, the question I'm having, we're having a lot of rain now, and the revenue for the outdoor usage has not gone down considerably? Or is there a base of, you know?
I, I haven't gotten the numbers in for this last month yet.
Because people aren't using their outdoor water, you know, so it's all rain. So they're saving money and, and we're losing money to some degree, or?
Well, to some degree, the long-term projections anticipate normal rainfall.
This is not been normal.
This is the kind of thing where the rate stabilization portion of the fund would help.
And it helps out, yeah.
Offset that, yes.
Okay. Supervisor, I, I don't have any.
I just have, I just have one question. Okay, so you go through this. This is pretty much going to be your same presentation with different numbers for all your districts, right?
Yes.
And at the end, I, I know you guys have done just a yeoman's job trying to get this to work and to go through it. And it's one of those things that I know Jeff and I talked about a year and a half ago, or something over there at the airport, right? It's just crazy with, with, what's going on. So at the end, this is what you believe is, I mean, I like where Supervisor Parks said, you know, it's more of a fair way of doing it, but it's also defendable.
Yes.
This is what you and here, plus I think our attorney would agree, and I think this is what you're seeing around the state. These are the things that you can defend based on that lawsuit out of San Juan Capistrano, right?
Absolutely. We've, we've run our methodology by county council, and we've gotten their, their support. In addition, as you stated, is the new rate adjustments and the new way of doing business will be fair, equitable, and more importantly, transparent.
Yes.
It's, it's actually difficult to determine. You can find out maybe what you're paying, but you don't know what your neighbor's paying because they could be on a different band. And then it's just kind of put on the bill. We didn't even put the band number on the bill itself and didn't really have any place that that table I showed you at the beginning was even located.
And I think, Michaela, the basic thing here is that we're meeting Prop 18 requirements, the cost of service. You know, I think that's, that's important, you know, that the, the public understand that. So.
You know, the, what you stated, that it's important for the public to understand that, this is really complicated.
It is.
You know, and I think that just kind of adds to it. And then on top of that, we're not only dealing with the, trying to make it fair for Prop 218 that everyone pays their fair share, we're also adding on increased costs that we would have done anyway. So it's kind of a double whammy, and it, it serves to, one, I think, increase the rate, and two, make it more complicated. So I, I know that we're, this is a learning experience for us all, and I think we've all learned some from it. But I just say this, I, I can understand where customers would be confused because it is a complex thing that's happening anyway.
And then also, we're going to have pass-through costs eventually that, from Cuyegas and, and those other providers too, you know, those pass-through, that are not a requirement of 218.
Yeah. I, I think Linda brings a good point up, but it, it's, it's difficult, it's going to be complicated, it's always been complicated. It's hard to explain this to everybody. Most people say, why do I pay more when I get this rain? And then you have to go through the understanding of fixed costs, don't go away. You're right, it's just a complicated.
And then you have to learn about the tier, and then you have to learn about cubic feet of water instead of gallons.
It's not easy what you guys have to explain.
Get into the band discussion. It just gets very complex. And I, I don't know if there's some way we can simplify that and still achieve our goals. I think that would be helpful.
Well, I think one of the benefits of this is that going forward, we will have a much more simplified structure. It will free up my staff time to be able to evaluate, you know, how, how we can improve our customer service and some other things that I've been trying to implement in the district, so.
And this is the responsible thing to do. It is, you know, definitely have the funds there to pay for the actual commodity. You can't do anything else. You got to pay for that water. That shouldn't be coming from anyone else except for your home. You're, you got to pay for the water you are using. You're buying your water. It takes the energy. You got to, you got to take care of that. Essential to see that you have a reserve fund because if something goes wrong, you got old pipes or you need to put in new ones, you have the funds for that. And that, that is essential also. And then overall, why we're here too is just to make sure that people pay their fair share. And I think as a government, we have to do that. The case in, was it San Juan Capistrano, it was an important case because some people weren't paying their fair share, and in some cases, people were subsidizing others, you know. So I think we just have to really have a good justification that you are paying just what you should be paying and not having to pay more or less than, than that. So I understand this, and I think it's a reasonable thing to do. And I, I know that, I also appreciate the input of the Community Service District, Waterworks District 38, its citizen body, they voted unanimously in favor of this. Nobody wants to pay more, you know. They don't want their bills to increase. And we just have to increase that trust that we're doing everything that we can, that we're not wasting money. And I think that one slide shows you, you guys are paying less than most people for the same service. So you've done a, a good job at that, but it is a complex.
Supervisor Long.
Well, I just wanted to talk about the impact of not raising the rates. So that will make sure that our maintenance will be deferred, correct? Go ahead.
In this district, it will probably be continued to draw down, but yes, we would, we would be evaluating what maintenance we would have to do and keep it down to probably emergency repairs only.
Okay, so it's, it will have a long-term effect, and we've seen that in our state as well, when we don't take care of the maintenance items and to be preventative and so forth. And we know, even though we're having these strange, wonderful storms, we still will have an increase in the water cost. We will have increase in the energy.
Some basic cost.
So it's the basic cost. Sometimes people have commented to me that, oh, they're just raising it, and they float a whole bunch of other stuff in that bill. So I, I'm only stating this as clarity to ensure that people understand what is going on here so they don't have that same assessment. So I, I appreciate the time and effort. I know you guys have been working on this extremely long. And also appreciate the, going to the community. I know we need to do it, but the way you do it is also very important. And so I'd like to thank you for the time and effort that you have spent to make sure that this is understood by people and that they do have that time to assess it. Because like you said, Supervisor Parks, this is a difficult thing to put together, and it's very complex. And so the more that we can get an understanding of it and ease of, of understanding, the better.
That's so important too, when you have max and you have advisory boards that you can speak to, and they represent the, the community, which is really great. I also want to thank you and Jeff and your, you know, for doing an excellent job. Again, this is a public hearing. I don't have any speakers to, oh, one, one up there. I think we need a blue card for that.
And this is the Chair of our Waterworks District, Mr. Dick Hibma.
And go ahead and state your name for the record.
My name is Dick Hibma. I live at 152 Lower Lake Road at Lake Sherwood. I'm the Chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee, have been so for the last six years. The other members of the committee are Terry Felix, Nathan Stockmeyer, Robert Bianchi, and Kurt Skaren. We met with Michaela Brown since she's been here, the Director and her staff on October 19th, January 10th, and January 27th on this very subject. The major difference this year is the compliance with Proposition 218. We can only bill customers for what it costs to deliver the water. There is a minor difference, the 6% increase of the water that we buy. Because the old three-tier system attempted to discourage high usage, the changes that are required end up with relieving the cost to some, neutral to others, and increasing for the majority. The Advisory Committee has spent many, many hours on this process. We are united in supporting these changes, and I hope that you do soon. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Supervisor Parks for getting me involved in this six years ago. I've learned a lot. I'd like to thank Jeff Pratt for finding Michaela Brown. And if I could take another 30 seconds, share two things that I've learned in the last six years. The Thousand Oaks Star this morning alerted me to the fact that Bell Canyon was successful in protesting these changes. One of the things that I've learned in the last six years is we deliver water to people's home for one-half of one cent per gallon. These numbers look big, but when you compare it to other commodities, it's a half a cent a gallon. The second item is what's going on in Oracle Dam. Surprising, shocking, and it's going to have a big impact on us. The last time a major dam was built for storage in California was 1974. Since 1974, the population in California has more than doubled. The shocking part about the rate increases is they are now increasing every year. This problem is not going to go away. What problem? For the last five years, we've been in a drought. For the last two years, we treated it like a one-year drought. Supervisor Bennett's initiative to examine and explore alternatives for additional supply deserves all of our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you so much. And thank the advisory board, you know, or committee for, for supporting this item. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, thank you so much, Dick, for the work that you're putting in. A lot of, these are all volunteers, and they are putting in a lot of hours, doing their homework, asking the tough questions, and doing a good job representing their community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have any additional speakers, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And as it plays, your other board.
I, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay. First and the second, this vote. Okay, and that's approved. And thank you again, Dick, for coming over and, and sharing with us. And Michaela, we have now item 25, and this is the public hearing regarding proposed rates and charges for Bell Canyon. Michaela?
Good morning. Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, CEO, Mr. Powers.
And I'm going to open the public hearing too, by the way. Go ahead, go ahead, you're on.
For the record, I am Michaela Brown, Ventura County Director of Water and Sanitation. I am prepared to offer a presentation, but in light of the fact that this is now a receive and file action, since we have received written protest from over 50% of the district's customers, we are unable to proceed with our proposal at this time.
Could I ask, you, I don't know if you have a slide, I was looking for it, but you had a slide that showed the number of people who are overpaying for their water. Could you tell me how many in Bell Canyon are overpaying, or what percentage?
What do we have, about 700, about 700 clients or something?
There's about 720 customers.
And, do you have a slide on that?
I have. Is that, this is the slide you're talking about?
Yes.
This shows kind of a small group that is overpaying, and then another group that will see smaller increases, that part of that you could tally as.
And they're reserve funds. Without this increase in it, well, you're just, I assume the costs for the water and all those things that have increased will be paid for with the reserve fund?
Yes. So this would be the status quo funds balance, and it shows us essentially running out of, depleting the reserve funds within two years. There are some things the district, some actions the district can take. There's certainly, right now, some planning and design funds we expect to, to spend related to a reservoir that is planned for this district to provide some backup water in case of an emergency. We would not go forward with that and be able to save some of those funds.
So, Michaela, so do you believe maybe you're going to meet again with the folks there and, and share the information, or continue working with them? Is that, and then?
Absolutely. That's, that's the plan. That's, that's the plan. Step one, we're developing a letter right now as a written response back that we're going to send to all the customers, not just those that protested. Kind of highlighting what happened and, and some of the impacts and some of the mitigating measures we're going to take. In addition, we want to start a series of public meetings to get the public involved right from, from the very beginning to try to find out what, what were the, the pieces of what we were trying to do that either we didn't explain adequately enough and look, and evaluating their concerns and making sure we're incorporating that in any future plan.
And potential, potential impacts, you know, if you don't raise the rates. And, and as we talked on the other item, maybe gradual impacts or, I'm not sure, you know? But you will go back to those folks.
Absolutely.
And roughly, how old is their pipes? You know, I mean, as I recall, I know they have a pump station that is a more expensive item right there. And you want to make sure that thing doesn't break down or no one has water, right? So I'm just wondering, this kind of, if, if, they certainly have the ability to do it. They're homeowners association, they can be very well organized and block any increases. But there is repercussions. Your, your reserves go away, you have a, your pump station breaks down, you know? What happens at that point, you know?
Absolutely. We would go into breakdown in emergency, maintenance only. But you could draw that down enough where now we can't afford to pay caigas for the water that actually comes into the district, and that would be a big problem. I'm hoping over the next few months that we can be able to explain that in, in a way that will gain the support of the residents in this community.
Okay, so-
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I appreciate the ability for people to vote whether they should have an increase or not. It's an unusual situation because it has been found by our experts that it is an unequal allocation of costs. People, some are paying too much, some are paying not enough, I mean, are paying, are not paying, are, are not getting enough for what they pay. So the concern is that it is absolutely not distributed fairly. So it's unusual. It essentially breaks the law, right? The law says you can't do that. But they would be the ones to sue themselves, I guess. I mean, who, usually they would sue government that they're, they're not being billed properly. In this case, they're not being billed properly, and they're okay with it. And they may not understand that, but that's essentially it. And as far as not paying their fair share, they just won't be able to get the service. Because if the funds aren't there, they're not going to be able to get the service. So I know there's some education that needs to be done, but I do appreciate the fact that they have the right to vote. And in this particular case, they've made a, you know, a strong statement. And it's probably related to the fact of, do you want a water rate increase? No? Okay, then you don't get one. And it's that simple. So I can see where they would fill out these forms and, and see that they don't have to do the rate increase. I think everybody would sign that also. So it is really important for them to understand what that means. And I think that's, that's kind of your job.
And that's absolutely right, that people get the correct information. That's important because if you tell me you want your water rates increased, and I don't have any information, I'll, I'll like say, no, I don't want it. You know, but giving the right information, I think, is extremely important to them. And you're trying to correct inequities too. I think that's, I know Jeff mentioned that to me and you, but you're trying to correct us, balance it out and make sure people are paying the, the cost of service.
So that if they're not paying enough for that water, then that they're cutting into their reserves, right?
That's right.
And if those reserves are depleted, you were saying in 27, 2018, was it, that the reserves will be depleted? I, I think that's a big issue though.
It was 2019.
Mm-hmm.
Right. It would be at the end of fiscal year 19.
2019. So if they deplete those reserves and they're still using the service, they're getting the water, who's paying for it then, the extra cost? So that, that's a big question, isn't it?
That's important too, even in your own personal home, if you start using your, your bank savings and to, to supplement your-
Forget the fact that you, you may not have any reserves if something goes wrong, but you don't even have reserves to pay for the amount, the cost of the water.
No money in the bank.
They shouldn't be subsidized by the rest of Ventura County and Bell Canyon because they don't want to pay for the cost of their water. So they'll, we do, hopefully, if they continue to decide they don't want to have to pay extra costs that is passed on to them, then we have to have a plan for what to do. Because they shouldn't be able to get a service for less than the cost to the county, otherwise we're subsidizing them.
Oh, any additional? No? So this is a, a receive-and-file?
Receive-and-file.
And you'll come back, you know, sometime in the future?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion for them? Second that? Okay. That's approved. Thank you. So that's our last item for the Board of Supervisors, so we're adjourned, and we won't be back on, we'll be back anyway at 1:30 for the APCD. Thank you. So we're adjourned.